Commissioner Benson, can you hear me?
All right, I think we're going to go ahead and start the work session as I know we have plenty to get through tonight as we try to figure out a few technical glitches with one of the commissioners. So Al, roll call.
We'll start with Benson. Okay, we'll pass for now Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Moser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
City Attorney Denherter.
Here.
All right, now's the time for public appearances and I do know that we have one special guest here tonight, John Brown from Stockwell Engineers who has, we thought was a blanket, but I think it's something else that you're going to talk to us about tonight. So take it away, John.
Thank you. Council or Commission and Mayor John Brown with Stockwell Engineers. I don't know where that's coming from. But we wanted to just express our appreciation for the ability for us to get involved with the pool project. We were the lead consultant on that project. We had pulled together a team of experts to help pull that to the finish line, working with city staff. And you folks through that entire process was a challenge, but yet it was a lot of fun. We really appreciate it. The towels were supposed to be here at the opening, but due to COVID, it just got delayed. But we wanted to just give you guys a little token of our appreciation and make sure you get out there and enjoy that facility. It is awesome. We've had nothing but compliments from that, from our staff, having a chance to go out there with their families and enjoy it, as well as just friends of ours that we visited with. We truly want to get good feedback so that we can make improvements in the future, but we've had nothing but a lot of positive comments on that. So thank you guys very much for having the confidence in Stockwell, and we want to continue working with you folks in the future. And we feel that that was a great project that we were able to work with you together on. So, thank you.
Well, on behalf of the Commission, thank you very much for the gift. I know they're going to come in very handy. I'm a water walker, so it might keep me cool or warm on some of those cool mornings. So a couple, well, first of all, also thank you to you and your partnership. We have a beautiful facility that is highly used, and it was a pleasure working with you guys putting that together. But I do have a question.
Yeah.
What's your favorite thing about the pool?
You know, I, you know, I'm, I like the lazy river and the, basically the competition pool. That just gives, that brought a whole new aspect to the facility. And the idea of not having the competition pool there to have all the, during the regular day-to-day use, not so much for just competition, but more the day-to-day use. That's the step-up kids. It's the older generation that use that, the diving boards and the climbing wall and the different open space where you can utilize that open space if it's crowded somewhere else. That's really a value. We just, we just think it's a class act, a class facility, and you guys should be very proud of that facility. We've heard about it a lot of different areas. We've heard about it from other communities, how excited they are to have visited it and wish they had one. And so it's really a nice facility.
Great. Anybody else? Well, hopefully they're keeping you updated on the numbers. I know every time I drive by there, it's packed. The parking lot is full, and it's really great to see. So thank you again.
You bet. I think we could have had a bigger parking lot, but it's never big enough. But we've, that's a good problem, right? I mean, people can park in the other areas around there. But yeah, just like on Saturday, a family member or employee of ours, their family was there, there was about 1,000 people. And he said it seemed crowded, but it wasn't crowded when you're walking around there with 1,000 people. So that's pretty impressive. And I think it sounds like Todd said that the numbers are just exceeding expectations. So that's great. So thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you again. We'll look forward to using that gift. Much appreciated. All right. I don't believe there's any other public appearances during the work session, so we will move on to our work session agenda, which has City Manager Leon going through Triple B and utility rates. So I will turn it over to her.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Moser. I'm going to check with Commissioner Bridget Benson one more time to see if she's present and check her audio. I'm sorry, Commissioner Benson, we still don't have your audio, so.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Now we can hear you, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I have to have my.
Cutting in and out, Commissioner Benson, but. We're going to mark you as present. We think you can hear us. You're cutting in and out.
I'm here.
Okay. So Mayor Moser, if I may continue, I'm going to start with the easy part of the meeting, and I think it'll be the easy part of the meeting. We've been surprised before, the utility rate changes for 2022. You have those in your packet for work session, but it's not that exciting because there are not any changes. Staff took a look at the fund balances, and we believe that the rates that we have in place currently, our current rate structure will be adequate to pay for the expenses that we budgeted in 2022. So, you know, typically, we have a small increase every year in evaluating the fund balances. We didn't feel it was necessary, and therefore, you know, not the right thing to do. I don't want anyone to think that we won't have rate increases in the future. In fact, we know with some of the projects we have planned that we will. But in terms of 2022, we don't believe we need an increase. So what you have in your packet is just an average household typical 5,000 gallon use and the average rates. You're used to seeing that, but no change from '21 to '22. Happy to take comment, questions, or feedback.
I will say, I was just really relieved to hear that we're able to do that this year. Because I know as we've annually had to make increases, the public has been acutely aware of that, and it's, the cries for us to stop have grown louder. So it's nice that we'll be able to give them at least a year reprieve.
Okay. Well, let's move on to then talk a little bit about the Triple B. Ed Colleen or Dwayne, I'm not sure who did it, print out some bigger sheets because it's hard to zoom in and scroll through, I know, when we're looking at the Triple B. And I have some extra sheets there in the audience if people want to take a, take a look at them. The numbers may not mean much unless you've been, been part of the discussion, but I'd aim to explain them. Primarily, I'd like you to look at year 2021 and 2022. That's what we'll talk about. And first, we'll talk about this year, 2021, because there are some requests for this year yet that are included in this proposal that I'd like to talk with you about. Now, as, it's your purview as a commission to take out anything that's been proposed, or put in anything that, that you think is appropriate. This is my recommendation to you, and it's open for your discussion and for your critique. My sort of litmus test or how I decide whether or not to put something in the Triple B is, does it feel like the right fit? Number one, does it fall underneath the state statute by which Triple B expenditures can be made? And then number two, will it bring revenue back, bring visitors to Yankton, get them to visit Yankton, possibly return to Yankton? So that's kind of what I use as a, as a sort of feel out for when requests are made. If that's not the case, I haven't included it. So looking at 2021, I'll draw your attention to the National Field Archery Association. That's about midway down the page. Many of you remember that in a previous year, a two-year contribution was dedicated to NFAA, so that was in the amount of $65,000. In working with the committee to bring the many tournaments that are forthcoming, one of the ideas for that tournament, for those tournaments, has been a fireworks show in addition to some of the other things that are being planned for those events. And in visiting with Bruce Cole, he's asked if the city would be willing to contribute to that. So that's, that would be an additional $10,000 that's been budgeted. Again, there'll have to probably be other partners in that show to make that what NFAA would like to see it be. But that's why there's an increase there. Again, does that pass the test for me of, you know, will those types of events bring people to town? Yes, NFAA not only has special events, as you know, but they have an opportunity to bring in tourism and recreation, not just through outdoor field archery, but also indoor archery. So that's been something that's his, in our history, we have supported in the Triple B. Moving down to Riverboat Days, you see the $20,000 allocation there. That has been supported, has not been supported in the past with Triple B dollars, but you'll remember that not too long ago, you committed $20,000 to help with the extra costs of bringing in a bigger name event and some of their event infrastructure. So you can't really tell me to take that out because you already voted for it. So that's, that pretty much stays. Moving down to special projects, I want to talk a little bit about that with you. You see, we've had that go up substantially since, for the year-to-date, but we've spent a little more, we've spent a little more, and then there's some other things to talk about. So one of the things that is in that $20,000 is the Guppy Grant. So you'll recall that you passed a resolution to spend $10,000 early in the year for the Guppy Grant to help offset the cost for folks that need some assistance to get to that Huthers Family Aquatic Center. Also included is the, if you'll remember, the Bowling, United Congress Bowling Congress marketing dollars that you supported. Tonight, there's going to be a request from an Eagle Scout on an Eagle Scout project. It's a small amount, but it is, it is something that is attached or adjacent to a facility that brings people to our community, so appropriate for BBB. And then I also budgeted for a $2,500 request from Mount Marty University for their tailgate, I guess grand, grand opening or their inaugural tailgate is part of the football team. Again, that's one of those things that I think passes that test for me to propose to you in that has the potential to bring people to town if we get people excited about Mount Marty University football and what can happen pre-game and post-game in the community around those events. Probably brings in not just family members of players, but we hope a lot of spectators and fans to cheer on the Lancers. So that is in that proposal. We do have someone here this evening from Mount Marty University if you're interested in hearing more about that, that opportunity. Those are the things that are in 2021. Not the end of the discussion, the things that are not in 2021 that have been requested. One of them is a contribution to the Mead Cultural Center and the Territorial Museum. They're looking for funds to be committed to them to help move the buildings from, the historic buildings from West Side Park to the Mead Cultural Center area, or what they're going to call Heritage Park. So in the past, the city has supported the Mead Cultural Center for capital construction. I did not include the, any money in 2021 or 2022 for moving these buildings for a couple reasons. One, I haven't got a formal request. I've just gotten some emails through other staff, but I know it's a, it's a question that's out there. And then secondly, you know, to me, the act of moving those isn't what, isn't going to, doesn't pass that test of, does that bring, you know, people to the community? Secondarily, maybe once they're there, it will, but that's for you to discuss and decide and let me know if we, if we need to include it. The other request that is not in my recommendation for 2021 is a request from Transit. Transit is requesting some money for a grant match. I think that if the Commission would be interested in assisting with that, that would be a discussion that we would have during the other portion of outside agencies, which is part of our regular budget. So this, that would, you know, as you know, you support Transit currently in outside agencies. So to me, that's where that should be discussed and not in this, not in this discussion. So I thought maybe we could tackle 2021, the year we're in first, if you'd like. And then we can talk about 2022. You will also notice that there are some higher numbers in 2021 based on, you know, doing some of the things that we held off on, on 2020, specifically facade grant. We did two years of facade grant, sort of in one year. If the revenue comes in that we project, and if these are the expenditures you make, we think we'll have about a $476,000 balance in the Triple B then at the end of 2021. So I'd like to pause and take your questions. As you know, you don't vote in work session, but if I hear from enough of you that, you know, we really need to put X dollar amount in for, for X agency, then we'll certainly take a hard look at that.
Curious with the facade grant program, how many requests do we have versus how much we're able to award? Do we have quite a few more requests for dollars than what we're able to give? Okay.
Yes. For those of you who can't hear Dave shaking his head up and down, the facade program is really a very popular program. And I think it's one that is really a visible program. So, you know, we were excited to be able to do more this year than, than we had in the past and to help address more facades in the Meridian District. So in 2022, there is, I did propose going back to that $30,000 as we typically have budgeted, but Commissioners can also edit that.
Will you talk, I'm sorry, will you talk for just a minute about the special events, the event coordinator activities? There's a big jump in that number, but I also know we've had a big jump in activities, and that number at $35,000, it looks like it's going to stay. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes. So previously, that was budgeted in parks. In, some was, some was budgeted in parks and some was budgeted in the Triple B. It makes more sense to us that it's in Triple B. We have added some events, so we've gone beyond Music for the Meridian. Kids in the Park has been a really popular event. We think that probably stays. And we'd like to continue to do more types of things like, like that. So, you know, that does look like a big amount of money, but by the time you're booking entertainment, Mike, you can probably appreciate, you can gobble up, you know, quite a few, quite a few dollars. And they are, they do stick to more local and regional acts, but you know, you have a series of four or five Meridian, music at the Meridian Acts, and then four or five Kids in the Park. So it's mainly those two events, but possibly others. Sometimes we're able to partner with other communities and get somebody a little bit less expensive, but it does take a little bit of, not just dollars for the, for the setup and things like that, but also then promoting the event as well.
And I would just like to be clear, I'm fully supportive of the increase in funding there. And I, from what I've heard from people in town, cuckoo kangaroo may have been worth that entire jump. That was a little pun as well.
It was, it was.
I was there with my toddler, and it was an experience. It was, it was fun.
And I just saw Commissioner Schramm there. I saw no toddler, so I don't know. I didn't really see Pax in there, so I don't know.
We're all kids at heart.
It was a good time.
City Manager Leon. Amy, could you break down, obviously happy we're supporting what MSAC is doing with the Missouri River. Is there a reason that it was 12,000, or is that just how we broke that, that donation down to them?
So historically, we've supported them at $2,500. And then a couple of Commissions ago, I can't remember years anymore because they, the days are long, but the years seem really short. The Commission supported an action of $25,000 of support for some promotional type activities. Some of that hasn't been expended, and they, they charged us accordingly, so they didn't ask for the whole request at once. So we kind of kept accounting of that. One of those things was the video, for example, promotional thing that, that they put together. So that's why, and we'll carry that through. If they don't ask for that this year, that portion will carry that through then to 2022 because we, the Commission did commit to it. There's other agencies helping to fund that, so they may or may not ask this year for that remaining amount.
Okay, yeah, I make, that makes sense. I remember the 25,000 that we voted on, but I was trying to figure out how that added up through these numbers. So that's what I was trying to figure out.
So that's labeled as Missouri Valley, or excuse me, Missouri River Corridor? Is that, is there any, is that exclusively MSAC, or are there other Missouri-related things?
Specifically MSAC.
Can we rename that just so we?
If we, yes, if I can remember that, yes.
Cool.
I have a pen here, yes.
This is Commissioner Mybaum. I think we had also, we had at least heard a request from the Friends of the Missouri. I believe that was the name of their entity. And I don't recall exactly, but I believe at the time, the request was monies to have come out of the Triple B. So I don't know if that might be part of the reason that there was the renaming of that cost center.
Perhaps. I don't remember that. I'd have to go back and check.
To go back to Commissioner Johnson's comment about facade grant earlier, I sit down on that committee, and the number of high-quality applications we couldn't fund because we didn't have money was, there was several. And, you know, I think it would be worth a discussion to see if we could increase the facade grant amount just based on how our projected balance is. Even $15,000 more to be a $45,000, I think we could easily fill that amount for businesses that are trying to improve the look of the downtown. So that'd be a suggestion I would make is to increase that at least by 15, if not more. I mean, 60,000 seemed like a lot this year, but it was doable, and I think it could be doable in the future.
So you're saying for 2022, Commissioner Schramm?
Yes, correct.
I would be in favor.
Commissioner, I would agree with that as well. I think with the facade grant program, it's certainly one of the easiest to be supportive if one of your concerns is if there's a reasonable return on investment that we can expect. And simply because of the structure of that program itself, it's a worthwhile investment for sure. But if one-time monies are on anybody's mind, and then also again, just given the fact that we will have, I think, a reasonably sized balance that we can expect, I, I would definitely be in favor of even doubling the amount, perhaps as a one-time opportunity again in 2022. And then we can see what the following year would bring. But it definitely seems like the demand is there, and it is a proven worthwhile investment for what we all probably agree is the heartbeat of, of our city, and that's the downtown area.
I think the popularity also speaks to the fact that people can see the dollars, and that sometimes these things are kind of nebulous, where you, we all know they're good things, but you don't see it so much. So I think that's another reason that, that program is popular. So you're talking about 2022. I do want to mention, we do have budget numbers in for Yankton Area Progressive Growth, as well as Convention and Visitors Bureau. As you know, those things are now combined under one organization, Yankton Thrive. So, you know, what we didn't know from the Commission's standpoint is, you know, do you want a certain amount focused of your contributions focused on Convention and Visitors Bureau, traditionally Commission, Convention and Visitors Bureau, i.e. tourism-type activities? What I would suggest is we wait and see what the Yankton Thrive Board develops in their strategic plan, which probably won't be done yet when we embark on 2021, or excuse me, 2022. And we wait and see what their strategies and goals, objectives are before we start, you know, deciding how the funds are allocated. But again, that's Commission purview. I did leave in our fireworks show, Fourth of July fireworks show.
I'll just say I'm in favor of increasing the facade grant program too, because of all the aforementioned, aforementioned reasons. The other area I might be interested in is the special events that fall under Brittany's purview is, you know, are there things there that she and Todd are wanting to do that they haven't been able to that we think would have value to the community?
Well, I think so. You know, we, we want to, we want to keep things manageable, of course. We kept this year very manageable for a couple of reasons. We didn't know what the world was going to be like this year, but also we knew that the Huthers Family Aquatic Center was going to be all hands on deck. I suspect once we have a year under our belt of operating that facility, we will start incorporating some special events into that facility. You know, if there's more funds allocated to special events, we have more room to be creative. Can we manage with what's in the budget? Yes. So, yeah, I'm sure there's more they can bring to the community with more budget. I can't speak to any specifics, but I know one of the things we've talked about just in general is, you know, what else do we bring to keep people engaged at the aquatics facility? You know, there may be more opportunities to join timing, you know, not just Kids in the Park, but maybe there's other events that can, that can kind of partner with that new facility and make that draw more people, so.
I just think it's so important for us to create events, opportunities for the community to get together and see one another and have fun. I think it makes people feel like they live in a real community that has a future and is a home versus just a place where they live.
And, and one of the things that Todd and I have talked about is maybe more intergenerational type events. You know, we want kids to have most of the fun, but not all the fun. And so, you know, maybe there are some things that can incorporate more intergenerational type entertainment or activities.
And I, just going on here, the, the other thing is the professionalism with, which we're able to pull these events off. I think we've seen a lot of volunteer events struggle because it's just hard to get that commitment when people have so much going on in their lives. So if we can have professionals managing it and making sure they happen, that, that means a lot, too.
If there's a flavor for that from other Commissioners, I would also mention that we might want to bump up our special events overtime a bit because it does take folks to move picnic tables, you know, pull trailers out, all those types of things. So I can certainly nudge those two line items a bit, and I'm hearing that there's interest in nudging up the facade grant program.
I have a question about the Mead proposal. Did they actually can, have they officially asked for that money, or again, this was just emails that came from other people?
They, I believe Dave Mingle received an email from one of the staff there, or one of the board members. And it kind of came recently in the last couple of weeks. And so I just thought, you know, well, let's talk about it so that they don't miss the opportunity here to talk through it, that this would be the appropriate budget to take it out if there's a flavor. I could certainly ask, you know, Crystal for a formal letter from her, but, you know, we've worked with them long enough. And, and it was pretty clear in the email, they're looking for funds to help move those buildings off-site and get them to the Heritage Park area. Now, Now, if the commission wants to do that, and Commissioner Villanueva and I had a little conversation this afternoon, we would probably address our West Side Park budget again because that would, if they're, if they're moving those, we can't just leave bare dirt there. You know, we'd want to do some, either some sodding or probably some, look at the irrigation and maybe incorporate that into our bigger project that we've been talking about at West Side Park as well. But we still have like four days and like three hours to finish the budget, so we have time, we have time to do that.
I just think if they need to officially ask, then she'll have to do that. I think that it could be moving those buildings and completing that project. I think the end, having seen the final project before, I think would be a community draw. So I just want to make sure that they don't miss that if, this opportunity, if she hasn't officially requested it.
Well, you, people can always come and request, wait a minute, my microphone's on, but people can't always come and request. What's difficult here is not setting boundaries because if people see like anybody can come ask anytime, it's tough on you guys and it's tough on staff because everybody's doing great things in the community. So we'd like to be, I'd like to put requests that are forthcoming and are forthcoming together because I think then you get a more full picture. But as you know, people come and request throughout the course of the year and some I say, no, I don't think that's something the commission would be interested in, but you can come anyway and sometimes that happens or sometimes they seek other avenues, you know. In the past, CVB has had a new event opportunity for people, so we direct them there and make sure that they seek out other sources as well. So.
So Amy, if I'm understanding correctly, this is an unofficial official ask. I do think, to me, I think something needs to formally come from Crystal so that we know that this is something that she supports and it's not somebody just randomly asking for dollars, that it's gone under her direction or her guidance to be able to do. But did they also reference what, how much they're asking for? Did they give us a range or an idea?
I believe $10,000 was the request. They were not given an outside agency or BBB application because we haven't been supporting them in the Triple B. So your support for the, for the Yankton Territorial Museum is through the collective impact funding, but in visiting with Lauren Hansen, the physical move of those buildings would be appropriate under their mission, which is why, you know, I thought it was more appropriate for the BBB discussion, but, you know, it won't be before the budget's submitted, but I'm sure Crystal will be happy to put together something. And in fairness to her, I didn't tell her, you know, we're going to be making this, having this discussion and have this because we haven't received anything formal, but if we can, I thought if we could have, just get a sense of where you were, if you were absolutely not, or if there was some interest, they can come back with a proposal as well.
Well, I think it's important we follow protocol. We do have a good history with them, but I would want to have them follow the guidelines that we have other people do, would be my take on it.
So to be totally fair to them, their initial request was, would they be eligible for bid money? And so their $10,000 request does not fit in what the bid board has determined to be what, the type of project they want to fund, at which point then Amy and I had the discussion about BBB and brought it here. So they might have not gone through with a formal application process because they didn't fit with the bid fund and not really in a discussion about the BBB.
But I can certainly make that request of them. And then we'll have to remember when we do 2022 that we, if we do something different, but we will. So going back to the facade for 2022, I'm, I heard 60 and I hear, I heard 45, so that to me says 50, but, but I don't know if they, at our house, we cut a candy bar in half and then the other person, the one that didn't cut gets to choose a side. So that's how I feel like it's a fair way to do. But whatever amount you all agree upon, you see the balance at the bottom. If revenue comes in as projected, could come in better, could come in worse.
I would just say, over the last 10 days, I have interacted with a number of Yankton residents who live afar now and have come back to town and they can't stop talking about how wonderful the Meridian District looks. So I feel like, I think if we put 60,000 in this year and we're able to make it work, I'd like to see us do that again and keep up that momentum. I remember when we had this discussion that we said we could always give up to 60,000, we wouldn't have to give that full amount. So.
Certainly too, that might be able, you know, like everything, facade improvements can be very expensive. So, you know, one of the contributions of the $30,000 allocation, I believe, went to one project and, you know, you can easily spend $60,000 on a, on a facade rehabilitation. So that might make, you might be able to do many more types of projects or more, a more meaningful project for somebody.
I would also like to state that I would think a $60,000 amount would be well-deserved for the efforts that have gone in the past and the, just the attention it gets. I've personally helped multiple last couple of years, businesses that have gone to the Meridian District because of how attractive they found the district. Crazy Days this last year apparently was a huge success for the vendors or the retailers that were downtown. And so it's, it's attracting people. They want to see the project continue. I think 60,000 is a good number to see if we can get good applicants again in the future.
I think the facade grant is a fantastic, a fantastic grant program. It certainly has benefited downtown. I think one thing that we do want to be concerned with though is we have the bridge downtown as part of the Meridian District and I think we, we need to be careful, that's a, that's a big budget item that is going to be coming up. We want to be careful not to be spending, you know, if we're running a, if we're running a surplus here, I think we need to start thinking about what it is that we're going to be doing in the future with that. That is such an anchor to our Meridian District. I think we, we want to make sure that we keep that in our thoughts and not just think of, you know, this, this year. That's something that is going to be looming along with, along with the wastewater treatment facility. Those two things are, are big items that are coming, coming down the pike and we need to be thinking about them.
This is Commissioner Mybaum and I think one thing that we should also be mindful of is, once we go through the motions of not just the continuing support of the downtown facade grant program, but also this opportunity to increase that funding, really what we're ultimately looking for is thriving downtown and like Commissioner Brunick mentioned, with the bridge in mind, we could see an opportunity in the next few years that a thriving downtown would also be supportive of a bid of its own specifically for supporting the ongoing maintenance and, and, you know, usefulness of the Meridian Bridge, for instance. So I just throw that out as something to be mindful of because there's a lot that can also be taken care of, possibly even in a large, in a large way, just by continuing to support the ongoing development of our downtown. And one of those things could even possibly be, like I said, a bid that gets set up specifically for the ongoing maintenance and support of our pedestrian bridge. So just something to think about.
Amy, where are we at with kind of bridge maintenance and what we see in the foreseeable future?
We have a small bridge maintenance program, project planned right now. There's some, I would call it spalling, but excuse me, Adam, if that's not the appropriate term. On the southern side of the bridge, some of the piers have, have some, they need some TLC and so engineering's putting together a project to do the repair. We will have underwater bridge inspections and the Meridian Bridge is part of that bridge inspection. At one point, the commission again will have to decide, do you want to have, hold an inspection on both levels of the bridge? That'll take a pretty big chunk out of your capital improvement plan for whatever year you decide to do that. And then at that point, you'll know what areas may need to be addressed in terms of maintenance, structural or if it's, you know, more cosmetic. My recommendation, our recommendation is to wait to do that inspection until we've identified, you know, a major issue that we think, yep, it's time or that time period runs out from the sort of general life that they gave us, the state gave the city of that bridge. And I believe that was, gosh, I'd have to go back and I think it was in 2008 or 2012 and they said 25 years, I believe. And looking to, so, so it wouldn't say we're quite there yet, you know, but again, if the commission wants to move that up, that's within your possibilities. It's tough when we have infrastructure needs, other infrastructure needs that are, I guess, what I would call more critical infrastructure. But yeah, that will be something that you'll, you or a future commission will have to decide. I don't know that that would be a Triple B expenditure, but Commissioners Mybaum's comment was well said. It'd be nice to have ongoing, a way to look at that as an ongoing funding source because if it is, if we, if the future is to continue to maintain this pedestrian bridge, there'll be always ongoing maintenance and that will be beyond what Triple B or our normal capital improvement plan could support on its own.
So is it the state of South Dakota that holds the money that was set aside to demolish the bridge?
That's correct. It's an escrow and the question may come, how much money that is? And I don't believe I have that answer.
Does it earn interest?
I don't have that answer. I can get it for you, but.
Does Charlie know? He's waving his hand.
Charlie's just happy there's not a utility rate increase.
Charlie Gross, 1510 Burley. They have escrow, they're earning interest, but the cost of demolition will go up every year and consequently, we need it back to the state and it becomes their problem to demolish it when that time comes.
Charlie Gross, ladies and gentlemen.
I guess a question I would have is, I don't ever want to demolish that bridge, so is there a way to convince the state that we put that towards maintenance of the bridge?
I don't know who you're looking at. Possible, you know, this is a little bit, we're kind of coloring outside the lines of a Triple B conversation here, but I think that kind of conversation is the type of conversation we would have at a strategic planning session. I think there's a lot of moving parts there. It definitely is an icon, but to me, that's a, you know, we thought, the Aquatics Center was a big bite. This is a, you know, this is a, another big bite. So this would be a, I think, a strategic planning, anything's possible and, and never is a long time. I learned that from Al. So, yeah, I think there's, there's possibilities. The state has some surplus money. Maybe somebody can convince the state out of some of that, but I think that would be a great, one of the great topics we should talk about and deserves a robust discussion because, you know, like all things, it does have a useful life and I don't want to be a downer because I love the bridge too, but we have to also be practical about what we're investing in for the future of Yankton to take care of too.
No, I was just going to say, is there other discussion related to Triple B?
Yes. I was encouraged to see the request from Mount Marty University on there for $2,500 for the football tailgate to be included in that special projects line item. You know, I just, I don't have numbers, but anecdotally, the number of people who have called me looking for places to rent for a short-term rental just to come into town for the football Saturdays has been immense. I don't have a place to send them right now, but, you know, that's, I think the excitement for that is, is only going to gain momentum, I know that's their buzzword, gain momentum as it goes in the future, but anything we can do to help just make this one-time tailgate be the best tailgate it is. It's going to continue for Saturdays, but it's, you only get one shot at the first one, so.
They do have a request into the Yankton Thrive as well, if the CVB program may be available to them. You know, I looked at it that way as well and I included it in the recommendation in the sense that we don't know what it could be yet because we've never gone through it before, you know, so, and it does take some, some promotion to do that, so that's why it's in the proposal and thank you for saying that because I was going to reiterate that to make sure everyone understood. If there's not more comments or questions, Mayor Moser, that's currently in the proposal.
This is Commissioner Benson. Can you guys give me?
We can.
Awesome. Okay, so I, in regards to Mount Marty, I did get a text from Shannon with Mount Marty today stating that she did call one of the hoteliers in Yankton and they are booked for that first tailgating weekend and they did state that a lot of their bookings, they know were due to the football game. I just happened to ask some random questions and she had gotten back with me via text message today. So at least that's money known going back to the Triple B.
Thank you, Commissioner Benson. Shannon Verrick is here as well this evening. She was nodding her head as you were suggesting that, so, yeah, I think people make weekends, events out of that and enjoy doing those types of things.
An additional item, I did have a question in regards to the Yankton Thrive group. Right now, there's money separately, like you said, allocated for the BBB as well as for YAPG. So are you thinking about just turning that into one line item and then at a later point in time, if we want to designate how the funds are spent or where they're used, we might do that, but following like a strategic planning? Are you thinking about just combining those two line items? What does that look like?
Yeah, I thought about that, Commissioner Benson, and initially that was what I had talked to Dwayne about doing in our budget and then I thought, you know, let's just, I think it makes some sense to allow Yankton Thrive, the board, to hold their strategic plan so we understand what their short and long-term goals are and to see how they're developing in their prioritization and their work plan and at that point, make a decision as to whether or not you want to direct amounts into certain areas. I'm sure Thrive, I mean, I'm on the board and on the exec committee and I know I'm receptive to that if, because it is public dollars, it's a little bit different than your private investment. Be receptive to that and Nancy, when Andy is here, if you'd like to hear from her directly. But I think there's going to be some years where there might be an initiative that we want to put a lot of resources as a community towards and that, you know, that might not necessarily line up if there's a division from the commission on an allocation. I think we just, it's just too early to tell really and so that's why I left it as is.
Okay. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Mybaum and I know, I think I saw Nancy there in the audience. It is still a very large dollar amount. It's $445,000 total. It's the biggest expenditure out of the Triple B and it's probably not fair to ask Nancy to go over, you know, a breakdown for us here tonight with 10 minutes left in the work session, but I do feel it would definitely be worthwhile for, for all of us to be able to perhaps hear from Nancy or other members of the organization, the new organization at some point, perhaps as part of a future meeting so that, you know, we, we and the public have a pretty good understanding of, of the priorities because again, it's a very large dollar amount and I will be honest, it does feel a little out of order. Granted, I have a lot of trust in the people who are making decisions, but when we're talking about just under half a million dollars and then there's still this conversation of what are the new priorities, I think if anything, it would be a worthwhile opportunity for Nancy or others from the organization to be in front of us so that they can basically break down the dollar amounts and then for us to have a better understanding of what break down the dollar amounts and then for us to have a better understanding of whatever new expectations there might be from the organization.
I see Nancy shaking her head yes, so maybe we can look at doing that in a, a future meeting. I would point out that Commissioner Benson and I also serve on that board along with City Manager Leon. So there is good city representation on that board as we move forward in that organization. But I don't know if you can see her shaking her head from afar. So she is shaking her head and maybe City Manager Leon, that's something we can get on one of our future agendas.
Yes, and that can probably be done even prior to your approval or acceptance process of the budget. What I don't think we will know yet is probably have it fully vetted out. We're having our first exec board meeting here coming up this Friday, and at that point, I think we'll be talking about things like what's the right timing for strategic planning? What's the right process to take? So, you know, I don't want to speak for Nancy, but I know from being on the transition committee, and we want to make sure that we're taking the, the right time to think about this and be very thoughtful and intentional in how we move forward because this is going to set the tone for the whole organization, so, and the future, so. But yeah, definitely, I think we want to be more, one of the things I know is going to be a value of this organization is being a little more transparent and a little more open. So I think that will be something that we'd all appreciate communicating and having conversation with you about.
All right, in essence of time, eight minutes until the seven o'clock bell rings. So are there any other items on the work session tonight that any of the commissioners want to bring up or discuss with the time that we have left?
Real quick, I just want to clarify. So back to the MEED discussion. So if Crystal or someone from that organization submits a Triple B request, they can get that to you and then there'd still be time for 2022 allocation, is that correct? If it's approved?
Well, no. Yes and no. If she can bring, I'll probably contact her and ask her for a formal request and bring it to you at a separate meeting because I have to have my proposal into you by, I guess, Friday. And I, I'm not hearing for sure that there's definite interest in it yet until there's more understanding, so I probably wouldn't put it in until I knew that. Unless the commission is saying yes, there's in fact a lot of interest, and if she brings a proposal, put it in there. I certainly will. My understanding is you wanted to evaluate that a little more fully. She could still receive it in 2021, just wouldn't be shown here on paper.
Any other questions, clarification from anybody? Amy, do you feel you have the direction you need to move forward?
I do. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. So with that, there's no other business under our work session agenda. What we'll do is we'll go ahead and we'll take an approval to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Aye.
And any abstentions? All right, we will adjourn the work session and we'll begin with the city commission meeting promptly at seven. Thank you.
Commissioner Benson, Mybaum, you can just mute and stay on and we'll get you in our roll call.